To recap, on Friday, January 31st, 2020, the 10th grade community and the board received a letter describing testing irregularities for the English and history midterms for the 10th grade. Over the weekend, board members were contacted by many, many in the community with concerns, complaints, and questions. To be clear, the Board of Education was not involved in this situation and does not handle student discipline in the first instance. Also, the Board of Education does not determine or govern the day-to-day runnings of the school. However, given the level of concern, the BOE is here tonight to receive a report on the irregularities and the process as it was applied. A few important notes: The Board of Education does not have, nor would it have, student-specific information. If our conversation begins to veer into anything that could personally identify a student, then we will immediately call for an executive session. Any Board of Education member may make such a motion if they are concerned about this. We are bound, as a board, by student privacy laws. Public comment: We welcome public comment. If you wish to do so, please come to the podium, say your name and your address. Comment has a three-minute maximum. It has been brought to my attention that some may feel uncomfortable speaking publicly. While your name and address are required, you may simply say that you agree with someone who has gone before you. You may also aggregate your comments as a group. Additionally, any information that has been or would be received by email has been sent to the entire board and would continue to do so, and it is also sent to the administration. Lastly, we value free speech and hearing from all points of view. We ask you to please remember that all of these comments somehow relate to children on this issue. Darien has a long history of good civic engagement and discourse. Let us continue that tradition and model for our children. Please refrain from engaging in any comments that would personally identify a minor. Thank you, and with that, we will proceed, and I will hand it over to Dr. Atlee.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Actually, to the members of the public, let me say I thank you for attending this evening and for your communications over the past week or so. Please note that your thoughts already conveyed to administrators and those addressed tonight are valued by the high school administration. In discussing this matter tonight, the board and parents must...
I don't need to rewind, do I? In discussing this matter tonight, the board and parents must understand...
Now we're both on, sorry.
...must understand that I am bound to protect the personal identifiable information of all students as protected by the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, otherwise known as FERPA. As a matter of process, as the board chair has expressed, student discipline is an administrative responsibility that is governed by board policies. I share details of this incident tonight on behalf of the high school principal, Mrs. Ellen Dunn. For those of you who know Mrs. Dunn, she would readily be present for this evening. However, at my request, she is not at this... She is not here this evening, as this is not the appropriate forum for Mrs. Dunn to comment on specific matters regarding student discipline. Darien Public Schools is known as a community for academic excellence. The integrity of our school program and staff and students are characteristics of this excellence that should be celebrated, nurtured, and protected. The most recent incident of academic dishonesty at the high school is both unfortunate and unacceptable. Like other mistakes occasionally made by students, it is imperative that we use this event as a learning opportunity by presenting clear expectations for behavior along with appropriate consequences and interventions for violations of academic integrity. As we now know, recently, it was discovered that a finite number of students entered into the faculty, language arts, and social studies department offices after school hours and copied the answers to the multiple choice sections of the 300 World Studies and English 10 exams. It was determined that these answers were widely disseminated through social media. These exams may have impact anywhere from 280 to 300 students. The provincial pervasiveness and issues of fairness and scope of the compromise helped inform the administration's current decision that the most reasonable action to take is to re-administer the multiple choice parts of the exam. This is consistent with practices for standardized tests administered such as the SAT, Advanced Placement courses, or S-Back. Also, as recently communicated by the high school principal and our correspondents to parents, exams are purposeful in informing mastery of skills, instructional practices, curricular design, and interventions for students. When integrity of the assessment is compromised, none of these valued measures are reliable. The retakes are currently scheduled for next Tuesday and Wednesday. Based on feedback we've received, for those students impacted, the high school will not administer other subject tests during the time of the exam, and exam review will occur, and where necessary, new study guides will be redistributed to students who need them. Additionally, as always, the high school will take into consideration the individual educational needs of its students. I take this opportunity to reassure the board and our parents that at all times during all deliberations, the administration has been reflective and considered issues of integrity, fairness, disruption, stress, and reasonfulness. And as in all Darien discussion, the needs of all students, including the students who validated the academic policy, were taken into consideration. On a related matter, there has been several inquiries about how student discipline affects a student's participation in extracurricular or athletic competition. Consequences for serious disciplinary infractions might include school suspension, recommendations for expulsion, or police involvement. I can tell the boards that this matter has been referred to the police. When a student has a... As a matter of practice, when a student... If a student, under any circumstances, for any infraction... If a student were to receive a suspension... If the suspension was received, for example, on a Friday, and the suspension was to go in place for starting on Monday, any activities or otherwise over the weekend, the student would be allowed to participate. That is the actual practice that has been in place here, right? So I just wanted to reiterate that. I respectfully request the board and the public to entrust the administration with making the best decision possible, given the circumstances, in the best interest of the students and Darien Public School District. In the meantime, I encourage parents with specific concerns for their children to reach out to the high school administration. Thank you.
Does the board have comments or questions? Mr. Burke?
Dr. Atlee, can you tell me what the date was when the incursion into the classroom took place and what the date was that it was discovered, whether either the faculty at the high school or the district learned of the event?
I don't know right to have that in front of me, but I think it's the 18th. I believe it was the 18th. I believe. I need to double-check that. I just left on a... Pardon?
The 18th was the date of the event?
Yes.
Or was the date that the district or the high school learned of it?
It's probably a week or so afterwards, maybe even more, just because this has been the last couple of weeks.
Are there any other board comments or questions? Mr. Maroni?
I think a big question is, and I think, you know, that we... This is not in our purview, but I think what we have to ask questions of is, what are we doing to prevent this in the future?
So the discussion about future scenarios such as this is not happening. Clearly, we don't want to be in this position, clearly. But the response about students taking exams is not mutually exclusive to the administration and the high school doing a reflective process internally as to how this can be prevented, and actually just looking at exams in general.
Mr. Denis?
I would ask, as a follow-up to Dennis's question, just that the administration, as part of the investigation, is looking into how those students got into that specific area, why those specific documents were out and visible, and, you know, look at security protocols around the school. I know the schools are used on the weekends and different things like that. There's athletics going on up there, but there seems to be a breakdown from the security protocol that I'm sure will be reviewed by the administration.
Yes, the security protocol is actively being looked at. Actually, just as a passing comment, the high school, I think, is a very big building in general, right, for even activities and supervision of it. But the bottom line is, there should be no reason why a student should go into that area. That's just... It's inappropriate to go into that area, even if it's not supervised. But yes.
Mrs. McCammon? Dr. Atlee, there's, again, not a lot the board can do with a specific decision, but I think it does beg the question of whether or not our policies are adequate to the decision-making process and whether or not they're adequately specific. I think one of the concerns is that they're open to a fair amount of interpretation, and then people are interpreting it. I recognize you have to have some flexibility, but could you speak to the state of the policies that you've inherited as you've entered this district?
Can you just separate policies and administrative regulations as well?
Yes. So there are four... As the board knows, there is formal policies, and along with formal policies, there are administrative regulations. So for the most part, a policy is designated to the superintendent to develop administrative regulations. So those are being reviewed also under this. I will say, though, I do like some interpretation to some degree. I think we would want to treat our children and our young people individually and respect their differences and have some flexibility in there. But there's a meeting of the minds of reasonable expectations and commensurate with behaviors. So I think, right now, the policies pertaining to this are pretty straightforward, but it doesn't mean to say that they... We always review any situation, what could be done differently, what are the guiding documents, what's the security. So we'll do that 360 evaluation.
Mr. Burke?
It occurs to me from reviewing the emails and the communication that there seems to be, or appears to be, three different classifications of students involved in this event. There are the students who actually went in and obtained the exams, there are the students that you actually know obtained copies of the exams, and then there are the balance of class that you're not aware of whether or not they had an opportunity to view the exams or not. If you could speak to, because I'm sure it will come up in public questions, the process you went through to determine that the students who you don't know had A'd one way or the other, how those students are being compelled to take the exam again as to perhaps other options?
So if I understand your question, certainly through the administrative review, and I'll see, I'm not going to get into all the details of an administrative review at this table, but through their administrative review, you probably have those three different categories. Again, I can't get into the specifics of the consequences for each, but each carries a different... And a consequence is a wrong word. Each carries a different course of action, I should say that. But I can't really... Honestly, I can't really comment much further unless you want to...
Well, I'll try to be more clear. I mean, for the students who are not aware of one way or the other, if they obtained A'd...
Yep.
Were there other options considered? For instance, taking their... Whatever their semester grade was before the administration of the midterm and allowing them to make a choice between taking their grade as it stood at that point or, on the other side, taking a new midterm. Was that considered? And if you could tell me how that weighed out into the ultimate decision?
So I think that the administration... I know the administration looked at all these options, and appreciate many persons might be here even giving some scenarios to actually consider. The main reason for the exam being redone again is the pervasiveness of it, but to compromise it by being measured against some part of it versus the entirety doesn't seem fair in itself also. And if a student didn't want to take it again, how far is it that someone who did... Was not honest gets a better grade on that? So there's a level of fairness there also.
Any other public comment or questions? Mrs. McCammon?
So, Dr. Atlee, I just want to summarize and make sure I understand the next steps from here, that I understood you correctly.
Yep.
That, of course, at any time that there's an issue of this level of significance, we take a look and say, what can we do going forward? So what I understood you to say is that a 360 would review would include looking at policies, looking at the administrative regulations that come from those policies, looking at your security protocols, particularly around the exams, and was there anything else that I'm missing in that list?
Well, I think it's fair to say, I was at a table, Dr. Silver, and I was at a table, just looking at exams in general. Just the composition of the exams in general. But that was only... That was with the administration. I don't think that's, at the moment, pervasive at the high school in terms of...
Okay. If there are no more board questions, I want to make sure that we leave time for public comment. So is there any other board question or comment on this matter? All right, with that, I will call for public comment. I imagine many of you are here to comment, so one by one, your name and address, and if you speak slowly, because Deb and I need to take down your name and address, so...
My printer wasn't working, so I gotta put my glasses on and read it. Teresa Vogt, 22 Circle Road. My son is a 10th grader, and he's currently in both 300-level English and World Study classes. He worked hard all semester for his grades and prepared for both of those midterms diligently, even having him quiz him on the World Studies midterm in the days leading up to the test. He's more of a math and science kid, so those two midterms were the ones he stressed out the most about, and when they were done, even though he still had others to go, he felt a weight lifted off of him. So for these two to be the tests that he would have to retake is really not something I feel like reliving in my house. He did not even know of the cheating until the Monday after the midterms, when he heard someone had stole the World Studies midterm. By Wednesday, he heard the English midterm had also been stolen. Requiring a subset of the 10th grade to retake exams nearly a month after the material was tested while also interfering with other classwork, to me, is not an acceptable solution. It is a selected and targeted punishment. Despite what the administration considers the only solution, the DHS Student Handbook does not cite a retest policy. It does not have a policy on the books that requires a student suspected of academic dishonesty to retake an exam or an assignment, let alone a student that has not been accused of academic dishonesty. Moreover, the handbook clearly outlines procedures the school must follow in light of a situation that has been alleged, and you can find that on page 12 of the DHS Student There are a lot of rumors regarding what happened and what the punishment was for those students who stole and distributed the answers. The only way to dispel those rumors is for the administration to tell us exactly what happened and what that punishment is for those students who did indeed steal those answers. This can be done without identifying them. I will see... I think you owe it to the students who are affected, the students who honestly studied for those exams. You owe it to them to tell them what that punishment is, because right now, they think those kids have a slap on the wrist, and that is not a deterrent for future breaking of the rules by these kids. Finally, while I am up here, and we're talking about the behavior on our students, let's remember that we, as the adults, set the example, and that includes the Board of Ed. I was at last week's meeting, and that meeting has been sitting with me for a very long time, and a lot of people in this room won't know about it. When I walk into a board meeting, I should not know if you guys are a Democrat or Republican. Partisan politics, personal relationships, nor the wants of other boards in this town have a place at the Board of Ed. That should be checked at the door, and the only thing that should matter are the education and welfare of our students, which is not a partisan policy. I hope going forward, the board is able to act as role models for our students. Thank you.
My name is Pace Flaherty. I live at 6th Lake Drive, Darien, Connecticut. You may recognize my name from the petition I authored over the weekend to hold Darien Public School System more accountable for the violations of academic integrity. This petition, over the course of 72 hours, received 276 signatures from my peers and their parents in the town. I've come here with the same concerns that I brought to Mrs. Dunn yesterday morning for our meeting. Those concerns are mainly to discuss the policies that the board and Darien High School have regarding academic integrity. I'm specifically speaking about policies, policy number 5215 and 5220. Both are cited in the DHS Student Handbook under the Behavior, Expectations, and Student Discipline section. These policies clearly outline what acts of academic integrity that will be broken will result in disciplinary action, but these acts fail to specifically outline what kind of consequences will be taken towards the students that have committed those acts. A lot of students in my grade and in the school, throughout the school, as the previous speaker mentioned, are feeling, and rumors, obviously, we can't confirm it, but a lot of students in my grade and my peers have been feeling like the kids that committed these acts got away with a slap on the wrist, and that is very insulting to us, as we have to take our midterms, which also feels like a consequence that has fallen onto us. From the research we've done and the ideas I brainstorm with my peers, we bring a few ideas to change these policies. Specifically, we suggest that depending on how severe the violation of academic integrity was, it should be met with in-school suspension. And if it was with an act as severe as this going in the future, I believe, and my peers believe, that it should be a maximum 10-day in-school suspension. Our next suggestion is that the consequences should affect sport teams and clubs that the students participate in. I know this town is really big on sports and clubs, and a lot of students enjoy their time with these activities, and so adding a consequence on this, like benching them for a number of weeks, depending on how severe their violation of the academic integrity policy was, would be a good outlined consequence to have in the policy to dissuade students from breaking that policy in the first place. Our third suggestion is... Our third suggestion is that it be similarly outlined to the drugs and alcohol commitment form that was taken away recently. We now go to a meeting where we learn about the consequences of drugs and alcohol. In the past, we signed a form that outlined specifically the consequences for participating in those behaviors, and it should be more... The suggestion is that the policies in the Board of Ed and Darien High School handbook should be more specific and outlined so that they can dissuade students from breaking academic integrity in the future.
Mr. Flaherty, you are approaching time, if you want to wrap up.
Absolutely. A school's main purpose is to educate and prepare students for the future, and if it is unable to bring realistic consequences that would happen to these students in the real world, then I believe, and my peers believe, that it is not doing its job as a school. For this to... For the school to continue on with a good record and to set a better precedent, then they should change these policies to be more outlined, specific, and severe in the handbook and in the board policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Amy Zerby, 9 Morehouse Drive. I have an 8th grader and a 10th grader in the Darien Public Schools. Thank you, Board of Ed members and district administrators, for holding this public forum on such a serious incident. I am not sure if you are aware, but a similar incident occurred in last year's 7th grade class, when a student who took the test early took a picture of the test on his phone and then sent it to half the block via Snapchat. I have reviewed the school rules on academic integrity in the Student Handbook, and I have found them to be inadequate and weak with regard to punishment, especially when a situation of widespread cheating on midterms occurs. The Board of Ed must work with the administration on strengthening the rules and regulations. I suggest that you significantly limit the privilege of participating in clubs, councils, and sports, as well as prohibiting violators from ever getting leadership roles in these activities. These punishments would resonate with the student body. Lock them up, the tests, I mean. The high school needs to ensure... The high school needs to ensure that the tests will not be stolen, possibly by locking them in a high-quality safe. I am embarrassed to recommend this suggestion, but sadly, this is our reality. Finally, you may want to consider reducing the weight of the exams on semester grades. Our high schoolers are under a crushing amount of pressure, and taking this action may reduce the impulse to cheat, however, maybe not in this situation. This widespread cheating cannot happen again. It is incredibly unfair to the honest students, the staff, the school district, and the town. Thank you.
Shelley Scoglan, 139 Leroy Avenue. As a parent of a sophomore and a senior, I was wildly disappointed to consider that these are our kids, and I think we all, as a community, have to think about why this happened and what are we teaching our kids that it happened. But I think the fact that this room is so full tonight illustrates that we are having a crisis of confidence. There is a lack of confidence in the discipline that's being imposed in our schools, and I think we have to really take a look at that, right? Do our disciplinary policies reflect our values? And if not, can we tighten them up, and can we live by them, so that our kids know that there's a rule of law in their schools? I think right now, what we're seeing is there's a culture of intimidation. There is intimidation of administrators by parents, and there are students intimidating each other. That is why not a single kid stood forward and told us this was happening. Hundreds of kids got this test, and no one told us? I'm astonished. I really am, just really beside myself, that these are our kids, and this happened, right? We can't let this happen again. And the other thing, I'm so glad you guys already asked all my questions, but please, 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 can we look at the security protocols in this building? Why do we have so many outside vendors that have access to our buildings at night and on weekends? How did this happen? And how can we make sure it doesn't happen again?
Is there any other public comment on this this evening? You can come up. You can wait in line, it's okay, we won't bite.
Rich Hoyt, 1 Country Club Road. I was debating about speaking this evening, but my daughter had submitted a letter to the board to look at. I agree with most of the comments I've heard tonight. A few things I'd just like to echo. One, I think we need to make sure whatever disciplinary action we take is appropriate. I do think we need to remember these are 15-year-old students. I also think we need to understand why there is such pressure for the cheating and the pressure on the grades as we look at the consequences that are going on. I do also think that the board needs to take a look, specifically the administration's... I know it's not a board obligation, but the decision has been made to ask students that did not participate or have not been able to prove to participated in the actions, what this is... How this is affecting them. You've heard from several parents. I think Mr. Flaherty did an excellent job at making some recommendations from a student and his view, and as Mr. Burke had suggested, perhaps there's an alternative to having these students retake this test. It's a detriment to their study, their personal time, their ongoing academics they're doing today, and I'm just not sure that we thought through all the opportunities. So thank you very much.
Declan O'Mara, 17 Chasmers Pond Road.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat your first name?
Declan O'Mara. I think it's important for us today to remember our goals and what we're trying to accomplish here. I think it's easy for this to turn into a witch hunt of sorts and easy for us to sort of want to blame someone and punish someone. I think the reality of the situation is, we're all here to educate the students of Darien, and to do that, I think it's important that we can ensure that there is a fair test, and we should try to prevent this in the future. But I don't think ruining anyone's future over this issue is effective. It's not going to help anyone in the long run, and it's certainly not helping the students right now. I think the reality of the situation is, it's not easy to distinguish between someone who cheated on this test and someone who was innocent, and because of that, the only real solution is to have a retake of the test. For a lot of the parents here tonight, it's easy for you to say, there's no way that my child did this, there's no way that my child was involved, and therefore, my child should not have to retake this test. But the reality of the situation is, it's quite possible, and it is quite probable, that many of your students were involved in this incident, contrary to what you would believe and contrary to what they would probably tell you. And for that reason, I think it is essential that we have a retake of the test to ensure the fairness of this exam, and I believe that the school has handled the situation adequately, and I have faith in the school to punish the students who need to be punished adequately. Thank you.
Marley Hayes, 10 Hickory Lane. I just wanted a little clarification about something that was said earlier, which is new to me, that it became apparent that the test was compromised on January 18th, which is a Saturday. The statement about how the situation was being handled was issued at about 6 o'clock E.M. on P. on PM on January 31st. Since we now know, as you said, Dr. Adley, there is precedent as to how to handle a compromised test from S-VACs, SATs, et cetera, which is that a test is reissued, why was the test not proclaimed needed to be reissued on January 18th? Why wait till January 31st when we're weeks beyond when the test was issued?
We receive public comment, we don't comment back.
Okay. That's my, that's my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlee.
Leanne Mobarik, 86, West Avenue.
Could you spell your last name for us, sorry?
I just have, I know you don't answer questions, but pass along to administration some clarification. Someone over here tried to clarify this, but I still don't think it's clear. So you're saying that, if I understood you correctly, that the administration has placed 10th grade students in three categories. The students who actually took the test or took a picture of it, students who received a picture or the information, the answers to the test, and students who knew nothing about it. And you said that there is different consequences for each level. I guess if they are that sure that they have these three distinct categories, then why are the students who knew nothing about this, who again, I agree with, I don't know who stood up here and said that their child, these were their weaker areas and that they're stronger in math and science, the same goes for my child. This was an area that he really needed to study for, put in a lot of work, and now to have him retake that exam, it seems defeating for him, and it just doesn't seem fair to the kids who knew nothing about this. So I think it would be beneficial for administration to break down exactly how they know that there are these three categories and what is the exact consequence for these three categories of students, and to justify why they feel the need to give the consequence of retaking the exam to the students who knew nothing. And they can do all that without giving the names of the students. Thank you.
My name is Henry Canleon, and I live on 9 McLaren Road. So I'd like to talk, in my public comment, I'd really like to talk about the fact that, how to prevent this in the future. And I think the only way to prevent that is that the culture around how grading works at our schools changes. And I think that doesn't necessarily all fall on the Board of Education's responsibility, but it does fall on the Board of Ed's can make policies that can be handed down to Darien High School to encourage the idea that getting a C or a C+ does not mean your life will go nowhere. You need to tell students that they don't need to get an A, that they should just try their hardest and that that's good enough. I think that that culture is severely lacking. And if the Board and administration do not strive to protect that type of culture and that type of attitude towards test-taking and grading, you will absolutely, absolutely see more instances of academic dishonesty and academic integrity. I also feel that if the Board and the administration do not levy more severe consequences against academic dishonesty, you will absolutely see this in the future. If you do not have very strict consequences for something so severe as this, something that goes against the foundation that our schools are built on, the idea of equal education and the idea that all students should be honest and trustworthy, then you will absolutely see more of this in the future. You need to do that by taking away, as Pace Flaherty brought up, taking away the ability to do sports, the ability to do clubs, the ability to hold leadership positions. Because students need to, in a healthy way, fear the repercussions. If you go to college and you cheat on a midterm exam or even a normal exam, the most likely consequence is going to be your expulsion. You cannot cheat in the real world. There are no shortcuts in the real world. And the idea that you should go softer on high school students because they're high school students is ridiculous. We're adults, we're all standing up here and talking to you and signing petitions. We all have values and beliefs, and we are basically adults. You should treat us that way. Thank you.
My name is Prigun Sharma, 148 Old Kings Highway North. So I just kind of want to just clarify something that Mr. O'Mara talked about earlier, and that when we look at the three groups that we've tried to kind of place students into, as it was said earlier, it's 282 to 300 kids. There's no definitive answer, there's no exact kind of punishment that can be laid out on the kids who we know for sure cheated on the test. So it's kind of really important to understand that there is no plausible way to know exactly who cheated and who didn't because of the temporary, like how temporary social media is. And so to kind of assume that there's a perfect way to punish the kids, obviously not the ones who directly stole a test, but the ones who it was distributed to, just doesn't make sense because then what do we do about those kids who fall between 282 to 300? Who's to decide that just because their kid is, they're so sure that they didn't cheat that, oh, it's okay if we should maybe let this other one retake it, not sure if they cheated or not? So I think that's just the kind of the point that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. Kristin Harnish, 9 Duffy's Lane in Darien. Thank you, Dr. Adley and Tara Ockman and the Board of Ed for having us here tonight. We really appreciate it. I have a sophomore at DHS, and I just want to say that the Darien High School administration's action to require all sophomores in 300 World Studies and English to retake the multiple choice sections of those exams punishes the many innocent students who did not cheat for the crimes of the few guilty who did. Now, if these students are required to retake the test starting on February 10th, as other people have mentioned, this will be three weeks after they studied for the exams and took the exams originally. We have to consider that. And furthermore, requiring students to retake these exams places exponential hardship on students who suffer from physical, learning, and emotional disabilities, like test anxiety, which is very real for some kids, and for those who require much more time to re-repair, to re-prepare, to retake the tests. The administration's proposed solution to a situation that we all agree was dishonest and unfair is to treat honorable students unfairly by making them prove their innocence when they did nothing wrong. This is a burden to every student who did not cheat, and this sends the wrong message. So I request for the sake of all innocent sophomores that the district invalidate the scores for the multiple choice section of the exam and give each student a choice, every student, give them all a choice, guilty, innocent, whatever, because we don't know. So number one, eliminate your entire midterm grade, all sections of the test, from your semester final grade calculation. Just wipe it off, that 20% is gone. Or allow the student to retake the multiple choice section of the exam and incorporate the full result, the retake of the multiple choice and the old essay that they took, into their semester final grade calculation. But it should be the student's choice. This would be one reasonable solution, and I'm sure you guys have heard others from parent. I respectfully but strongly urge you to consider a solution that does not punish innocent students. Remember, the only way we can protect the reputation of our high school, which everyone seems so concerned about, is to actually protect the honest, hard-working students who are its very foundation. I thank you for your time.
My name is Jane Farhetti, and I live at 28 Cliff Avenue in Darien. I'm quite unique in the sense that I have four children at the high school. I have a freshman, a sophomore, a senior, and a junior. So the impact in my household, as you can imagine, is quite immense, and there's a lot of chatter and conversation and talk about this recent event. It is well-known amongst the students who the main ringleaders and perpetrators were of this event and how this transpired. It is not a secret within the student community, speaking as a mother of four students who clearly talk about what's going on, not only within their grade but cross grades too. And it seems to me that what the administration is failing to look at as well is the reason why some of these students may have resorted to this behavior. It is not just a matter that they took the examination and stole it because they were concerned about their own grades, because some of those students, as we know, are quite successful academically. So I think that there needs to be some consideration into the reasons why certain students responded in this way, and there should be action taken to support those students and to look at the reasons why they felt the need to behave as they did, and not penalize and punish the majority of students who did not know anything about the cheating until well after the event had transpired. And the pressure and the stress it puts upon those honest students is immense, not to mention that they feel that their integrity is being questioned. And when they hold positions of responsibility within the town and within the community, they don't like the fact that people might look at them and consider them to be dishonest as well. And I think that the behavior and the reason behind the intent also needs to be taken into consideration when looking at the consequence for those main ringleaders in particular who stole the papers and not only stealing the papers, but how they went about stealing them. It was clearly a considered, premeditated action. They didn't just find a test randomly on a photocopier and seize that moment. It was something that was thought through, time was considered about how they were going to fulfill the act, and then obviously, there was consideration as to how and whom they were going to distribute the information to. And I think all of those things need to be taken into consideration when looking at the consequences, but understand how it tarnishes the image and reputation of those innocent sophomores too. And they are concerned about that going forward, not only within the community, but also for their own academic records as well. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment this evening?
Hello. Doug Harmon, 24 Stony Brook Road. I have two graduates of DHS and one senior. My, my comments are purely about, I know this isn't the forum to discuss disciplinary actions, but what I'm concerned about is the euphemistic way that even Dr. Adley, you mentioned it as an incursion into the office. Let's call it what it is. It's breaking and entering unauthorized access. So my question to the Board and probably more to Ellen Dunn is, where is the line drawn between actions that are committed and punishments? So if someone molests a student or punches out somebody in the hallway or does something illegal, is that grounds for expulsion? Why is this not grounds for expulsion for the four students involved? That's my comment.
Hello. My name is Benjamin Huffman. I live at 8 Highfield Lane. So I think that this is a really difficult situation, and I feel like I sympathize with the kids who did not cheat and have to retake this exam. I think that's, you know, that sucks for them. I absolutely understand that, and it sounds like that, you know, for the, to be a parent of those kids and to be those kids, like that's a really unfortunate situation to be in. But I think we have to recognize the fact that we don't know who cheated and who didn't cheat in its entirety. And so with that in mind, I think it makes sense to retake the exam. I think the only other reasonable option would be to just cancel the exam altogether, which is 20% of the course. And if I were in that situation, I wouldn't want 20% of my course to be not counted. And I think that, you know, I think sometimes we're blinded by our love for our children. And I feel like a lot of the parents in this room and a lot of parents of the kids involved, and even the parents of the kids who, you know, definitely didn't cheat, I feel like in our effort to defend our children, sometimes we lose sight of the greater good here. And the, the kind of the goal that we have as a community, as a community, which is to educate our children and to prepare them for the future and to destroy someone's life to expel them from a public high school when they're like a sophomore in high school, I mean, that is, I think that would just be so far over the line and not in line with the goals, the stated policies and goals of our Board of Education and our administration. Thank you.
Did I see someone trying to make their way up?
My name is Colleen Hoyt. I live at 1 Country Club Road. I just wanted to bring it to light to the Board of Ed that the week before February break, where they're having us retake our midterms, all of our unit end tests have to be taken. During this time, teacher, the Ed administration has asked teachers not to give us tests from Monday to Wednesday. This ultimately means that our education is being pushed to the side, and any tests that we possibly have to be taken are being given to us on Thursday. This is ultimately bombarding all of our students with tests, even more tests on Thursday, and going to stress out our students even more on top of having to prep for these midterms. That's all I wanted to say.
I live at 54 Raymond Street.
Can you just spell your last name for me, please?
M-A-Z-Z-O-T-T-A.
Thank you.
Coming from a student's perspective, I believe that mental health is a large problem in today's high school society. And I think prior to this breach in examination, I think that students were given an entire semester to prepare and be ready for this exam that's worth 20% of their overall semester grade. And by taking this entire semester and throwing it all on these students in only, I believe, we were informed of the retaking on the 31st, and the actual retaking is happening on the 10th, for the English at least. So taking this entire semester and forcing the students to throw it into just 11 days of studying and, and mental preparation is a large detriment to students and their thought process.
Anyone else this evening before we move to our public hearing? Technically, our agenda's closed and it's a special agenda, if there's something specific that can be answered quickly.
I would just like to review the timeline again because I got lost in your description. I know you don't have the dates, but that was a question we were discussing, if you could just reiterate what you said earlier.
Yeah. And with that, if there's no other comments, we will close public comment. One more?
Noah Mobarik, 86, West Avenue. I'd just like to say that, you know, right now, we've gotten through midterm exams and we're back onto the normal course that we're supposed to go through as a school. And that means we need to retain a lot more information for unit tests that will come next week, the week before break. And by having to retake these midterms two days out of that four-day week, we get a lot less time to prepare for not only those unit tests, but these retakes of the midterm. And the distance from the Christmas holiday to the midterm, which is when most students, from my knowledge, do their studying for midterms, that's about two weeks. At the current moment, we have until, we have until Tuesday and Wednesday to study for these exams, and the weight of these exams is kept the same. I feel like that's not fair onto a lot of people who lose, you know, the, who lose the time to get into the motion of studying and kind of the movement of midterms in general, which creates a mindset that, you know, at least for me, helps to take these exams. And I think by retaking them, it loses a lot of that impact and, you know, the kind of test-taking knowledge that we can have at that time. It makes it a lot harder to do well on these exams. And I know people have brought it up before, but, I mean, making the semester exam non-void and just depending on the two semester grades, because the semester exam is supposed to be a representation of those two-quarter grades. And so if we want those grades to speak by themselves, like we hoped our midterm, which... is now dishonest in your eyes, seeing as you don't know who cheated or who didn't, letting those quarters speak for themselves would be a much simpler and easier solution for everyone, I think. Thank you.
Oh, one more.
How's it going? My name's Tommy Lasagna, 291 West Avenue.
Could you spell your last name for us, Tom?
L-A-S-A-G-N-E, kind of like the food. So I just wanted to point out that I think that there is precedent for what should be done in this situation. And I think that precedent can be found in the College Board. So when you take an SAT or an AP exam or something along those lines, what they end up doing is, no matter who did what, they make the whole entire room retake the test at a certain point, and that's, that's all that happens. There's, there's no more past that. And I think that we should look towards the College Board to see what they have done and how it's worked for them over all these years, to kind of realize what the solution to the situation is. And maybe a pushback for the date might be necessary, depending on when the day people were told the retake was going to happen. But I think that we should look towards this to find a solution and avoid any activation with anyone, so that's all.
Tom, could you just give us your address again for the record?
291 West Avenue.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Catherine Voe at 22 Circle Road. I know this situation's a very difficult one with whether or not other children were caught cheating or whether or not who gave out the test. But I think there's one thing that we're not mentioning is the accountability of this. There's, when what I've heard, the students who have been caught taking the test have only received a five-day in-school suspension, and I don't think that's enough. There's no accountability. In the real world, you make a mistake, you suffer the consequences. We've seen that in the past, just two years ago during the Turkey Bowl season, when two, three Darien High School students were arrested for both lying to cops and beating up two Nukane children. With that, there was barely one, only, there was barely any consequences without, they didn't play in the Turkey Bowl, but then they played the rest. And with that, one of the students got to keep their captainship next spring. With this, I think that people who should, who commit crimes like this should not be able to maintain their leadership roles, and they should have their extracurriculars taken away from them. Because if we don't have actual repercussions, incidents like this will be bound to happen again.
Hi, my name is Mike Murray, 54 Raymond Street. I noticed several times the Board itself and some of the people talked about how they researched how the College Board and some of these other organizations handled these situations in order to retake the test and re-suspend it. Did they look at the consequences that the students who cheated on those exams resulted? I don't, I know you can't answer that question, but if, if they're going to look to the, the College Board for what to do about redoing the test, they should also look to the College Board for the consequences of someone who cheated on the test and caused a major disruption to the educational environment.
My name is Olivia Punisill. I'm in the 10th grade. I live at 23 Fitch Avenue. I just want to take a moment to recognize, I understand the fact that we have to retake the midterm. I understand the reasoning for it. But the fact that teachers have been asked to suspend their testing, which is appropriate because students have to be given a lot of time to study, but I have three to four tests on that one Thursday because it's before break. And I know students that have the same number. So because of the placement of these makeup exams, students are now either having to compromise their studying for the entire semester for a test worth 20 percent of their grade, or they're going to compromise studying for four major tests that are their first grades of the next quarter, which is basically saying that no matter how you slice it, these students are going to have to compromise one or the other and not going to be able to perform to their full capability on any of these exams, which just isn't fair to any of the students. Whether they cheated or not, all of us are going to have to re-study and we're going to have to adequately prepare, which means that we're just not going to do as well, which is just going to affect both of our semester grades, which means that, like, our sophomore year entirely has a level of inaccurate reflection of our true capabilities.
Okay, seeing no further comment, I will call for a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Stein, so moves. Mr. Maroni, seconds. All in favor? That is unanimous? Oh, all right. Come on up.
I just have one point. Carson Baxter, 22 Lynn Court. Just a quick point. I'd like to comment on the structure of the test, how, although they have shortened the multiple choice section to make it more adequate for the time allotted during a regular period, it is the same amount of credit and weight on that multiple choice for fewer questions, meaning that kids have fewer redundancies. And those who don't test very well will have a more difficult time when taking these tests. And when the grading comes out, it may not be a full representation of what they truly know. That's all I have.
Yeah.
22 Lynn Court.
Lynn Court. All right. I never like to cut off, and Mrs. Seeny, again, then we have a motion on the table.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Michelle Seeny. I have 36 Birch Road. I have a senior, a sophomore, and an eighth grader. Ellen Dunn met with a few of us. A lot of you have heard our concerns. I don't, oh, there's a lot of questions. This has been a tough situation, and we recognize that. I'm speaking from a parent of a child that I firmly believe went into this with, you know, studying and doing what he needs to do. And I just want to just reiterate a couple of points so that you can maybe take a step back and just consider it in terms of going forward, if anything can be, you know, changed. First, the message that the students are hearing and a lot of the parents is that the retake is actually punishing the innocent kids and basically rewarding the suspected kids that, that may have cheated. Because the reality is, I don't know how the 280 names have been determined, but there's some basis to it. There's either by academic models, by performance, there's something that flagged those many kids. But the rest of the kids that weren't called into the office, you know, this is sending the message that the rest of them do, get a do-over, and we have to basically take out our books again after three weeks and now re-study. So I just want you to basically think about that aspect of it, because you're rewarding people that, in general, should normally get a zero if there was really a suspicion of cheating. And when it comes to the retake, the fundamental thing, if this was decided, I've, I've heard from students and from parents, that this was determined pretty quickly in the midterm week that there was a problem with the test. The kids were getting called down during the test. There was issues with it. So the reaction of that problem and when they've delivered the message to retake a test, I think is unacceptable. If, at the end of the midterm week, if we got an email from the school saying, "These two tests are flawed. We want to bring the kids back in on Monday and Tuesday and re-test them," that would have been an easier pill to swallow. Except now it's been three to four weeks since January 16th is when the midterm started. Our kids have moved on to new material, and, and it's not fair to them to basically say, "We're going to measure you on the same test and the same material, but it's in the past, and you have to put all of your new material aside." It's, you're basically setting them up for failure. And I don't think that that's fair. I do think the recommendation that we've tried to make and we've heard before tonight, that I really think you should let the performance of the students stand from the last five months, the two quarters. You can even consider the essay portion of the midterms that was not compromised as part of the grade, just maybe reduce the value. But I really think you should let the performance they've done be what stands for, for how they reflect on their grade. And give the option of a, of a multiple choice test for those students that were looking to improve their grade, and give them the option. But I don't think it's fair to universally think that this is a fair thing and have kids, their performance be worse because of the fact that it's almost a month later. So I just wanted to just reiterate that and realize, I just don't think the retake is fair based on the timing. And maybe you can consider that, you know, in the next couple of days. Thank you.
Okay, I am going to do a last call. I see someone saying in the back, "Feel free." But we do have a public hearing on the budget, so I'm going to ask if you'd like to make a comment, think about it now, so we can, we can move forward.
All right, I'll be really quick. Jody Bradbury, 137 Hoyt. Something that hasn't been brought up that I know has been a topic of conversation in our house, for those kids that did study and spent a lot of time studying, they have no clue what they even got on their midterms in these classes. I think the administration needs to look at letting these kids know what they received. For my son, I know it would be helpful to him to know that he did well on his midterm for all the studying and hours that he spent studying, and I think these kids deserve to know what they got on their midterms regardless if they have to retake the test or not. Thank you.
All right, we're going to try this again. May I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Stein, seconded by Mr. Maroni, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. We will move into our public hearing momentarily.